Item one is a consent docket A through D. Do I have any questions or a motion of approval?
I move approval.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is consideration and possible approval of an agreement for shared government services between the City of Bethany, Oklahoma and Bethany Public Schools for the construction of a park. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several months back, I was approached by the Superintendent of Bethany Public Schools, Drew Eichelberger, about the possibility of a project that they have proposed in their middle school area. There's a general grassy area, I guess, on the east side of the middle school area. It's always kind of been the drainage area, and they were discussing filing for a grant to put in a footsaw court. And if you're not familiar with a footsaw court, it's basically kind of like a concrete pad with a smaller ball. It's basically a playground. And we started talking and looking at it, and of course, funding became an issue with the grant, and we were trying to work something out. And thankfully, we developed a good relationship, and we were able to try to get to a point where we determined, well, maybe the city could come in and partner with the community to provide additional funds to the Bethany Public School to pay for their portion of the grant. And I'm happy to say that we now have this opportunity right now to create a partnership for the citizens of Bethany because we can assist in the funding, to a certain extent, for a public park for the Bethany residents that would be on the public school grounds. And that was a part of the grant. And thankfully, with the help of council and staff, we were able to get to this point. And I'm excited that we have this as an option. And I think we've got some residents in the audience that could provide additional information, as well as Dr. Eichelberger regarding the project. I don't know if staff has a report on this or not, but I think you'll be very excited when you see what's being planned and how we're going to go about doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. This will be a shared play space, if you will, and it'll be utilized during school for school purposes. After hours, weekends, holidays, those type of things, this will be available to the community at large to use. Additionally, I think it's important to know that the school has agreed to maintain this area. They'll be responsible for any repairs from wear and tear, that type of thing. And I would ask Superintendent Eichelberger just to come and tell us a little bit about that, and please talk about your understanding about the shared use of this facility.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for an opportunity to visit with me tonight about our shared space, the footsaw court in what we're calling the pocket park. So I was at a meeting a year or so back, and...
Need to put your mic on.
Something.
You're a little too tall for the mic, can you?
Turn it on.
How about that? Can you hear me now? Okay. So, again, thank you for allowing me time to visit with you. A year or so back, I was at a meeting, and a gentleman from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation talked to our superintendent's group about the fact that there was money available for projects in our communities, not just in Oklahoma City, but in other metro areas. And so I talked to him a little bit about that, had him come out and look at the space that we were talking about, building something, and just asking for his ideas. So he brought up the idea of a footsaw court, which I had never heard of either, and they... He told me that they built one at Rollingwood Elementary. Oklahoma City Community Foundation provided some money for that footsaw court. And so I went over and looked at it. Looks great. It's a combination basketball court and a small soccer court. Futsal's just a five-per-team soccer game played with a smaller ball. So we applied for the grant. We asked for $30,000, and they agreed to fund 30,000 of the $74,000 footsaw court. So then we approached, we talked to... Actually, with Steve's help, we talked to the Bethany Improvement Foundation, and they gave us $3,000. Now, I'm here this evening to see if you're willing to provide any funds for the footsaw court. And so with that, I'll open it up for questions, or let some of the people I've brought with me share their thoughts on this.
I have a question. On the cost, I thought it said 78,000 or 74,000 dollars.
Yeah. It's gonna... The... It's 74,000 dollars. We've got another about $4,000 worth of engineering that we're doing, or has been done. And then, in 25 years of being in education and construction, I've personally never seen a construction project come in under budget, so I would expect that it's going to cost more.
Do you have people from the community related to this?
I do. I have one from... Actually, both live in Bethany, but Tyler Thomas is on our Bethany Schools Foundation, and I'm going to let her come if you have a moment. And then Kristi Esco is also here, and she's a patron and an employee of the Bethany Public Schools.
Hello. I'm Tyler Thomas. I'm here as part of the Bethany Public Schools Foundation Board, but also as a parent, mostly from a parent's perspective. I remember when my daughter... I mean, many days, would come home and say, you know, we weren't able to go outside today because it was flooded, or it was muddy, and we walked... They make them walk around the sidewalk outside the school, and I just have this picture of these kids walking. And it was kind of sad to me that they don't have a place that's good for them to be outside during their lunch recess time. So that's kind of why I'm excited about the possibility. I know that we've looked at reengineering the drainage and all that, and it's just a huge undertaking. I think this is a nice thing to, you know, kind of a middle ground to agree upon that would be good for the kids, so... Thanks.
Hello. My name is Kristi Esco. I live... Excuse me. In Bethany, and I'm also an employee of Bethany Middle School. I'm here to give you kind of the point of view from both of those perspectives on this proposed footsaw project. As an employee, I've worked at the middle school for five years. My own children attended the middle school five years prior to that. So I know for at least the last 10 years, the middle school playground has been really kind of a disaster. If you're not familiar with it, it is a retention pond. I'm really not even certain, but it holds water. If there's an inch of rain, it floods. If there's a rain cloud in the sky, it floods. If there's two or three inches of rain, heaven forbid, it floods for a week. And our children cannot go outside and play, which is really unfortunate because middle school kids are 10 and 11 years old, and they need to be outside, burning off some energy and doing, you know, active work during the middle of the day so they can focus in the classroom afterwards. And instead, we have them either trudging around the sidewalk, like Ms. Thomas said, or we send them to the high school gym where they have to just sit quietly during their recess, which is just really unfortunate. And as an employee, I know that we are very excited about the thought that a footsaw court might be something that could be built that would help with that flood zone. You know, our outside basketball court is dirt, our football area is dirt and mud, and this might be a really great option to let our kids be outside more than they are now. So as an employee, I'm very, very excited about this project. As a community member, I just want to say that I grew up in Bethany. I lived here from the time I was born, and I don't know how many of you remember that where the high school stands now, there used to be a football field with a 400-meter track around it. And it was really a community space. People would walk the track, you would meet your friends in the field, and you would play, and it was utilized and accessed by everyone. And I think that this might be an opportunity for us to bring some of that back to the community. I envision this in my head a little bit like the, you know, maybe the SNU volleyball courts, where people can go and meet and enjoy their time in the evenings. I feel like the school district has been very supportive of the school, and this might be an opportunity for us to kind of give something back to the community where we don't have to send our kids all the way down on the other side of 50th if they want to go to a park. I just think this is a great opportunity, and I want to thank you for listening to what I have to say about it, and just ask you to consider it because I think it's got a lot of potential, and I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
I would like to say that for years, I was director of a public library, and we worked in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation. It was a township in Illinois, so they were both independent districts, but in the summer, the library and the Parks and Recreation District ran the schools. And so we were able to use the school library and the gyms, and that was just a wonderful partnership. So if no one has any questions, I'll be glad to support this and make the motion in favor of it.
I know we talked about matching funds. So are we talking about BIF is giving what amount was stated? Yes, Mrs.?
Marsha's here.
We are giving 3,000.
Okay.
That's the typical size of our grant.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Marsha Faisal, and I'm the almost outgoing president of the Bethany Improvement Foundation. And we have done many things across the city, and the typical size of the things that we do, when we do a matching grant, is around 3,000, and that's what we did. And we did mention that we hope that there would be other groups that would join and partner with us in helping. The main reason we wanted to help was because there's no park from 50th Street to Ripper or Eldon Lion. There's not really a park in that area. There is one that's across 50th Street, but that's too far away for school. And that was one of the things that was appealing to us, is that we would be helping the school and the community. We felt like that would be a time that people from the community could use that on the weekends and in the evenings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure we're clear on this. By this agenda item, this would not only include the funding of the specific amount by the city, but also approval of the project to allow Bethany Public Schools to begin the process of construction, using their plan to put the pocket park together and begin the process. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we do approve this tonight, it would not only be for the funding of 7,500, but also approval of the plan presented to the city by Bethany Public Schools to get the park constructed?
Correct.
If that's the motion, I would make a motion for approval.
I made the motion.
Well, I would emphatically second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Before we vote. Number one, is there money number set in stone that is just on an open checkbook?
From us, you mean?
That we're approving with this motion?
We're approving the city, supporting to the tune of 7,500, and BIF is giving 3,000.
Okay. I just want to make that a public record.
But we can't approve for BIF. I mean, that's just...
Right. That's just what BIF is...
Our part of it is...
7,500.
Right. Okay.
I also have a question before we vote, if I may. Just a question. Will this still need a site plan note for a park, or... I didn't think so, but I wanted to double check.
No, this is not going to require a site plan or our engineer to look at it. We're going to accept it as it is with their engineer drawings and calculations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would prefer something that, you know, we used to have basketball courts down at Ripper Park, and they got to be totally unattendable. And at the time they were built, nobody thought they would get that unattendable. And we got a plan to make sure that these courts do not come or get unattendable.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, based upon the agreement that we've got as a part of our packet, it indicates that the Bethany Public Schools would be responsible for the maintenance of the park, which would include, from the graphic that we have, it does have a basketball goal on either end, and that would be maintained by the public school.
There was a lot of illicit activity going on at Ripper Park when that particular thing was out there running, and I don't want something like that to happen in a close community like we have up on 43rd and North Asbury. We just can't have that. There's too many families living there.
I agree. And when I look around at other schools that have playgrounds, whether it's Western Oaks or Apollo Schools, or wherever that may be, you know, I don't see any crazy activity going on in those school playgrounds, and this essentially would be the school playground except for after hours, you know, when the community could use it, probably much like other schools, if you want to run out there and jump on a swing. So I don't... Mr. Shire, I hear what you're saying, but I don't see that happening around our other playgrounds at schools, and maybe chief could correct me on that if that...
Well, there's not much public on our schools, and they need this very badly.
Well, all the applicable ordinances for disturbing the peace, those type of things will all be in play here. If there is any noise disturbances, fighting, that sort of thing, and we did have some issues with that at Ripper Park, and with some extra enforcement, we certainly curbed those things. And so, you know, that is always a potential, but as close-knit as that neighborhood is, I don't see them standing for a whole lot of foolishness in the area.
I do hope so.
And I see them making a call to 911 very quickly if, in fact, there's problems. And one thing that I really like about this from a law enforcement perspective is, as she stated, there's not a park really for those neighborhood kids without traversing Northwest 50th Street. And that's, you know, as careful as we are in those type of things, things can happen. And I think that gives immediate access to a lot of young folks that could really use that without risking traveling and going across a major thoroughfare. So, Mr. Shire, I assure you, our police...
Would there be any lighting on that basketball court?
There is lighting.
Yeah, there's.
I believe lighting is shown in the drawing, so...
Okay.
But I assure you, Mr. Shire, the police will respond to any foolishness up in that area.
We don't want to transfer Ward four problems or Ward three problems up to Ward two.
We don't want that.
No, we certainly won't.
Mr. Mayor?
I would... Hold on. I would... We've talked about this, and I would like to say, as maybe some on this horseshoe would hope that I wouldn't say, but at a time when our school system is in dire need of support, I like the fact that a city council would be willing to entertain the thought of helping a public school in this type of way. And if there was any other school within the City of Bethany that had a need and could present it to the city council that made sense, and hopefully, BIF would agree to continue to do what they are willing to do, I would completely support this type of thing because I agree, kids got to go out and play, or the fifth-hour science teacher is losing their mind. And I just think it's good for the community, and I'm all about personally what's good for the community. If you can bring people out, kids out during the school day, and the community out during the evenings, I think it pushes away the activities, the illegal activities and things like that that we see happen. And I see... I think the more we can light an area and bring the community out, the better the community's going to be. So I like this idea.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment.
Yes.
If you would, page 25 of 89 on this packet, it has a completion date for this at 6/1/18. I suspect that's a... Yeah, it's a typo. It probably should ought to be 6/1/19, maybe, but we're a little behind the curve if it's... But that's what it says there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I'm excited that we have a partnership in the community. We have a partnership with the public schools, we have a partnership with the city, and we have a partnership with Bethany Improvement Foundation. This is a great example of how we should work together to make this community better. And this worked, and it was a win-win for everybody, and I'm excited about that. And I'm also excited to hear from the police chief that we may have a better police presence in the neighborhood if and when, if we have to. Hopefully, we won't, but that's also a win, and I think it's a great event, and I'm really proud of where we are and how we got here.
So I had a motion, and I had a second, I believe.
You do.
Please cast your votes. Item three was consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 1523, authorizing the interim city attorney to enter into a final general entry of judgment in the matter of the application of Craig Kragel. Do I have any questions or a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item four is consideration and possible approval of bid award for the cemetery vitalization project to Yager Construction LLC for base bid number one, which is the masonry and concrete, in the amount of 161,861 dollars. And base bid number two, fencing to Tim Mills Fencing Company, in the amount of 65,972 dollars. And the base bid of number three, which is the flagpole pavilion to Yager Construction LLC, in the amount of 20,756 dollars. Total cost of project not to exceed 227,833 dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
If there is staff...
Oh, do we want a staff report? Do you all want a staff report? I mean, the cemetery task force has been waiting for this forever. How long do we want to prolong this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd second the motion.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you. Well done, sir.
Item five is consideration and possible approval of library change order number 10. Do we have a motion or any questions?
I move approval. I was talking earlier with Councilman Todd, and he was asking questions about this. I said to be at this stage in this project and only on the 10th change order is amazing, and so this is quite a contribution or accomplishment. And by the time you get to the end of a project, and you have your contingency fund, it's still within budget, and we're making little changes that cost 200 or 600 dollars, if you've ever built a house, you know you have lots of things that have to suddenly happen at the last minute that you didn't think about. So this project, and I'll give Todd Olberding the credit for it, but it has really stayed in budget, and so I move approval of this change order.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please cast your votes. Item six is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 1525, approving support for the appointment of KP Westmoreland to the District Eight seat on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League.
I make a motion to approve, and this would be a great benefit to the city to allow our mayor to be an ambassador to the community.
And again, I'd like to clarify that this is a vacant seat, and this is an appointment or a recommendation for the board to vote, and so there will probably be several people from different communities and municipalities within this District Eight, and whoever the chair of the OML chooses to present to the board is who they will vote on. So there's no guarantee that I will be on this board, but I agree that I think it's a very good plan to have... Try to have somebody for the City of Bethany on the Board of OML. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item seven is consideration and possible approval to hold a regular city council meeting on January 3, 2019, at 7:30 PM, in lieu of the meeting that falls on January 1, 2019, which is a legal holiday. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item eight is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 1526 of the city council of the City of Bethany, Oklahoma, and mayoral proclamation calling for an election in the City of Bethany on February 12, 2019, for the purpose of submitting proposed amendments to the charter of the City of Bethany, Oklahoma, and provide for the conduct of the election by the Oklahoma County Election Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item nine is proposed executive session, consideration discussion and possible action to enter into executive session to discuss negotiations and the FY 2019 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bethany and the IAFF Local 2085. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Can I do number 10? And item 10 is a proposed executive session, consideration and possible action to enter into executive session for confidential communication with legal counsel regarding proposed litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and potential other third parties regarding the alleged intentional reckless and/or neglect production, promotion, sale, and marketing of opioids, including the unlawful diversion of prescription opioids, opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality as further set forth in resolution number 1524, with the advance of legal counsel to the public disclosure would seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the pending litigation in the public interest and as authorized by 25OS Section 307B4. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Thank you, and we shall return. We are out of executive session, and no action was taken, except do I... Can I entertain a motion to table item 12?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item 13 is citizens' opportunity to address the council on general topics related to city business. There's a three-minute limit. Anybody wish to address the council? Item 14 is city attorney's report.
I don't have anything this evening.
Item 15 is city manager's report.
Just a couple things, Mayor. I want to thank Phil Stoll for his work on the bid process for the cemetery improvements. We're really excited to start those, and it's been a long time coming, and we're just happy that we can do that, and thank you, Phil, and thank you, staff, who have shown great support to me over the past eight weeks, and I can't thank you enough. I've been very fortunate to have so much help, and it's greatly appreciated. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16 is council members' announcements, comments, and proposals, and let's start down with Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the council for their vote related to the pocket park with the Bethany Public Schools. Thank you for talking to me, working with all of the parties involved. I'm excited about that. And the biggest part of that is the process that we went through and the partnership we have with Bethany Public Schools. And I'm looking forward to other partnerships within the city of Bethany with other organizations, not only Putnam City Public Schools, but, you know, we can look forward to projects with SNU and the Bethany Improvement Foundation. I'm thankful for their contribution and grateful that they participated. I think we have some great organizations within the city of Bethany. If we can work together to benefit the residents, I'm excited about that because that's the way it should work. And we had an excellent example of that tonight in the meeting, and I'm looking forward to the next opportunity. I would also like to congratulate the Bethany High School football team. They came one touchdown short of beating the city of Tuttle. There will always be a next time, and it was a heart, kind of a gut-wrenching loss, but they did a great job, and I'm very proud of our community, the bonfire that they had and how we came together, attended that, and it was a great event, and it was a good opportunity to see how we can come together and celebrate our youth and the children and our educational process here through academics and sports. So, those two events were, you know, those two things kind of made the highlight of my last two weeks, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Mr. Todd?
I have more of a question than a comment. Mr. Chief, about two years ago, we had a property on MacArthur. It's a two-story office building. You may know of it. It was going to be condemned, and I don't see any activity. I drove past there today checking on that, and it looks like it's about to fall in on us.
Okay, it's timely conversation. I emailed former city attorney David Davis because I didn't have a clear understanding where we were on that. The former deputy city attorney, April Collins, was sort of working with that. As you know, she was appointed to be a district court judge. I emailed both her and David Davis. That went through, it's currently in receivership. Both that property, the owner owns several properties around the United States. All of those are in receivership. We had some broken windows that I directed Public Works to board and secure as we always do. So, we have filed the paperwork, but it was sort of stalled, I believe, because they were in receivership in hoping to reach some sort of agreement with the city. So, what I need to do at this point is to probably transfer all that information to our interim city attorney and let her pick up the gauntlet from there. But yes, we are aware of, and just in the recent weeks, there has been some new damage and some new facade that is coming loose and that sort of thing. And Randy can probably tell you periodically we have to go evict uninvited guests from there. So, yes, it is an issue, and we, despite it being in receivership, we probably need to take a more aggressive stance on that, so you're welcome, if that answered your question.
Mr. Herron?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Mr. McCutcheon?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Knapp?
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
I have one thing. I think our next council meeting, we should have an ugly sweater horseshoe. I think everybody should be rocking an ugly sweater. It's almost Christmas time. I think that would be... Awesome, so... And don't act like we don't all have one anyway, so... Item 17 is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until December 18th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is consent docket A through C. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is consideration and possible approval to hold a regular Bethany Public Works Authority meeting on January 3rd, 2019 at 7:30 PM in lieu of the meeting that falls on January 1st, 2019. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Please cast your votes. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until December 18th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust, item one's consent docket A through C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item two is again to hold the, this meeting, the Bethany Hospital Trust meeting on the 3rd of January rather than the 1st of January. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item three is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until December 18th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority, item one, consent docket A through C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item two is to hold the meeting that is supposed to be on January 1, on January 3rd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item three is any new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until December 18th, 2018.